Commission of September 2nd, 2020. Appointed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. In order to meet the required social distancing protocols, we must limit the number of people inside the chambers. Staff is assisting individuals who are present and wish to testify on items on today's agenda by ensuring that each person has signed in. We are requiring attendees in the chambers to sit in a socially-distanced manner, six feet apart from other people, not in your immediate group. Once you have testified, you should exit the chambers using the doors to the right of the desk, and then the next testifier can come to the microphone and begin testifying. In addition, for the added protection of all those involved, the Planning Commission will be allowing testimony on agenda items by video conference for individuals who pre-registered with the Planning Department prior to today's hearing. The testimony will be taken following the completion of the live testimony for each item based on position. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are required. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cell or phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note, the Planning Commission action today is final on the following agenda items: 1.4 Special Permit 2-0-0-3-2 and 1.5 Special Permit 2-0-0-3-3. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or the County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held September 2nd, 2020.
So move Campbell.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry?
Okay, Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Item 1.1 is Change of Zone 2179-K to amend the Central Park Planned Unit Development to allow for an early childhood care facility with up to 197 children and rezone properties from I-2 Industrial Park District Plan Unit Development to H-2 Highway Business District Plan Unit Development on property generally located at 5201 R Street. Item 1.2 is Change of Zone 1201-8-B to amend the Holdridge Idlewild Planned Unit Development by adding fraternities and sororities as a group living use and allowing signage per the B-1 zoning requirements on property generally located at 3535 Holdridge Street. Item 1.3A is Change of Zone 2002-6 from P Public District to O-3 Business District and the associated use permit 2001-0 to allow for a health care facility with associated waivers. Both of these are on property generally located at 5600 South 27th Street. I would note that there was a memorandum sent to the Planning Commission yesterday revising the staff report, the conditions of the staff report for that use permit. Item 1.4 is Special Permit 2003-2 to allow for the sale of alcohol for consumption off the premises on property generally located at 2510 South 48th Street. Item 1.5 is Special Permit 2003-3 to allow for the reconstruction of two non-conforming signs on property generally located at 233 North 48th Street. Both Special Permit 2003-2 and 2003-3 are final action by the Planning Commission unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these items?
I see a couple.
I had a conversation with Greg Newport on Change of Zone 2179-K. Greg was representing the owner on some site-related selection issues.
Okay, noted.
And I received the email that's in our packet about a week prior to it coming to us from our packet.
Tom?
I also had a conversation with Greg Newport regarding the Change of Zone 2179-K, but everything discussed between Mr. Newport and myself is fully encapsulated in our meeting packet.
I received the same email that Dick received.
Okay, I think we got them all.
Okay, is there anyone here, or I'm sorry, are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of these sites?
No, I don't see any.
Okay. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these consent agenda items? If so, please stand and state that item.
Okay, I don't see any. I would entertain a motion.
Move approval, Beckyus.
Second.
Finnegan?
Yeah, Finnegan, second?
Okay. Go ahead, Jerry.
Okay, Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearing. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide that information to the clerk for distribution. There's a manila folder up here on the desk that you can put your stuff in. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, will you please call the first public hearing item?
Yes, item 4.1 is Comprehensive Plan Conformance 2001-2 to review the proposed one and six year Lancaster County Road and Bridge Construction Program fiscal year 2021 and fiscal years 2022 to 2026 as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommendation is conform with the comp plan. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this item?
I don't see any.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the site of this item?
No. Okay, Mr. Zaff?
Hello, Alan Zaff, I'm a transportation planner with the Planning Department. And as mentioned, this is something we do annually. The county, the county Road and Bridge Construction Program, the commission has to review it annually regardless to conformity with the comp plan. Also, this program's also known as the One and Six Plan. The One and Six Plan is required by all municipalities and counties in the state of Nebraska to submit to the state so they can ensure they receive the annual highway allocation funds. This program is for fiscal year, or this One and Six is for fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22 to '26. The proposed program will be going to the County Board for funding. I believe it's scheduled for October 8th. My review is simply to review the One and Six Program or Plan in relation to the comprehensive plan for conformance, particularly on the transportation element or transportation section of the comp plan. My recommendation, staff recommendation is that the One and Six Plan is in general conformance with the comp plan. Regardless of the projects in the One and Six Plan, overall, majority of the projects are for system maintenance, system preservation. Regardless of like roadway projects, it's more or less, we call it second-stage paving, which is putting asphalt on the existing pavement or preventive maintenance, which is like a thin overlay. There are a few projects that result in going from gravel to pavement, such as 98th Street from Old Chena to A. And then regardless of bridge projects, it's primarily working on channel repair along bridges and also replacing a bridge to a concrete slab. I won't go into all the projects. I was going to transition over to Larry Legg. He's Assistant County Engineer for Lancaster County. They are the applicant, and I'll just transition over to him.
Great, thank you.
I've got a little bit of a PowerPoint. I'm Larry Legg, I'm Assistant County Engineer for Lancaster County. Good afternoon, everyone. Now, let's see how technology's going to treat me today. I guess there's two of them. Yeah, I got the right one. So I guess we're starting out well. Okay, afternoon, everyone. Happy to be here. As I said, I'm Larry Legg, I'm Assistant Lancaster County Engineer for Lancaster County. I've got a short presentation on the One and Six Road and Bridge Construction Program. That is a mouthful, isn't it? So, we just call it the One and Six for short. Oops, I got one too many there. Okay, the last slide was a picture of Pam. There we go. Picture of Pam in front of our offices. It's much better than the picture you may have seen last year, which was Pam standing in front of a snowplow. I kind of like that this is a little bit more appropriate than last year's. Pam wasn't able to be here, she had a prior commitment. She might be able to arrive before my testimony is done, so her contact information is there. Lancaster County Bridges, you know, I'm going to do kind of a short synopsis of kind of what the county is, where we're at, then what we've accomplished in the last year, and then some brief comments on this coming year's programs. We have kind of a unique situation, a challenging situation in this part of Nebraska, in that we have a lot of drainage areas, and in fact, we have 302 bridge or bridge-length box culverts in Lancaster County. Now, a bridge-length box culvert defined by Federal Highway Administration is if it's 20 foot down the center line of the roadway, it classifies as a bridge. So, you know, that's quite a few. And as you can see, the one that was there was pretty old and rickety. Well, on our road system, we have 45 miles of dirt roads. These are typically roads that only access fields and pastures. There's no residences on them, so we have not improved them with any type of gravel or rock surfacing. We have 1,052 miles of gravel roads, and we have 286 miles of paved roads that are a responsibility to maintain. In addition to the bridges in the drainage area or realm, we have approximately 1,000 box culverts that are less than 20 foot in span down the center line of the roadway, and then approximately 6,900 other culverts, pipe culverts, and driveway culverts on our system that are a responsibility. Also, Lancaster County provides surveying and GIS services for the county. We do construction surveying and staking for the projects, monument and corner preservation, your section corners and stuff like that. And that's what that picture is, that's a rock that the original survey was put in when they surveyed the county. We do land subdivisions and geodetic information and control for the county. In addition, we have some maintenance operations, and our fixed assets right now consist of 17 buildings around the county. That's down from last year, we did sell one off, and we're selling another one off, so next year, when you see this, it should say 16. We have several material storage sites throughout the county, and then we do have a rock quarry. Now, the rock quarry's not active now, it's down there south of Roca, but this is a picture, and I don't know exactly when, but this is a picture of the rock quarry. I'm guessing from what I see there, it was probably late 1800s, early 1900s era. Just kind of an interesting and neat picture to see. Also, our Lancaster County shop located out on Cherry Creek Road, we do repairs on all the county's vehicles. We repair our heavy equipment, such as motor graders and trucks. We supply fuel and gasoline for all county vehicles. And then this year, we started supplying Lincoln Police Department with fuel when they relocated their shop down in the same area where we are. Not the same campus, but close. You know, a little history, 19 and 20, winter and spring, you know, we had a much milder winter compared that year than the previous year, and a milder spring, too. Minimal flooding in the spring, we had some, but nothing that rose to FEMA-declared disaster as we had in 2019. However, we did have still some challenges that we're facing in 2020. One of those challenges is the construction of Lincoln South Beltway. It's put construction traffic on Sultillo Road. They're hauling a whole lot of dirt along there, and as you can see by the pavement breakup and some of the rutting off the edge of the road, it's been a challenge for us to keep that road maintained and safe for the traveling public, and it will continue to be a challenge throughout the next couple of years. And additionally, with the Lincoln South Beltway, we have some road closures. Currently, 68th Street is closed south, and that has diverted traffic over to 54th and some of it over to 82nd, and those are roads that have not been used to experiencing that volume of traffic. So luckily, we have 54th paved all the way down to Hickman Road. That gives us a paved corridor through there. We tried to plan ahead. They kind of cut up with us, we didn't get 82nd paved a little bit soon enough, so we were doing the project at the same time. It's a little bit, okay. Other challenges that we're facing, you know, I mentioned the winter of 2019, you know, we had a lot of cold weather, a lot of snow, and then we had the flooding, and that really damaged our roads. So, really, what we are doing, there's an ongoing process to bring those roads back up to where the previous condition were, and we're still working to catch up with. There's been material shortages, increasing material costs, and then simply the sheer amount that we have to work, we have to do to get those back into shape. We had some equipment hit by lightning. That was new for me. We had equipment that had been vandalized, somebody used our excavator for target practice one weekend. And then we have had some windstorms in the county that required some extensive cleanup of tree branches and stuff like that. Okay, and then of course, COVID-19. It didn't affect our operations a whole lot. I mean, most of our people are pretty remote, they show up by themselves, they go out, and they maintain the roads. Our office staff, we do have about 30, 35 people in the office. We've transitioned well to working remotely, and we've still been relatively productive, and it kind of works, worked pretty good so far. So, COVID simply has taught us some new things, you know, that what we can do and what we can't accomplish. 2020 FEMA process, you know, from the flooding in 2019, they identified about $1.3 million worth of damage from that declared disaster. The amount is being reimbursed by FEMA at 75%, and then NEMA, which is a Nebraska Emergency Management Agency, kicks in another 12.5%, and then the remaining 12.5% is the local responsibility. And we've got the majority of our FEMA funding, we have a few pipe culverts to finish up, but we've got the majority of the funding, and we're still awaiting about $165,000 from 2019 versus 2020, scour critical and scour susceptible bridges. I'm sure if you have been around for some of the previous presentations, we do have a problem with scour, which is washing out of the bridge abutments and the bridges. Last year, we were at 62 scour susceptible or scour critical bridges. We've reduced that number to 54, but we're still above where we were in 2018 at 42. So, we still have a ways to go, we still have some work to do. Closed bridges. Currently, on our system, we have 16 closed bridges. The map is there for illustration, hopefully you can see it on my screen, it's kind of small. We have 11 bridges that are either in design or being let for construction or ready to let for construction. However, we have nine that we haven't identified a funding source and to get the construction done. Current bridge needs. We have 29 structurally deficient bridges, and this information comes from the Federal Bridge Inspection Program. We have four that are functionally obsolete. A functionally obsolete bridge is like the one in the lower right, it would be a truss bridge that's too narrow for the existing roadway traffic. I don't know if you see, you're not going to get a 24-road planter across that bridge, it's just not going to happen. So, and there's no way to widen a truss bridge. Scour susceptible, that's not a federal reporting factor, however, that's something Lancaster County does. We've looked at the bridges that are actually scour critical, and we've looked along the same stream and similar construction bridges, and we take a look at those when we have rain events because they're liable to become scour critical, that's our thoughts. We have 20 scour critical bridges, we have 22 bridges that are, have a sufficiently rating less than 50. And then, one of the metric, if you compare us to the rest of the counties of Nebraska, we are 62nd out of 93 as far as the condition of our bridges compared to the other counties of Nebraska. Good news is, we were 65 out of 93 last year. Bad news is, we're in the bottom third, that's not where we want to be. Subdivisions are another challenge, or it's a little bit of a challenge. The subdivisions are generally lower-volume roads in these developments. You don't maintain those with a maintainer or big trucks, you have to have different equipment. That's not our general or our usual mission. So, we have 42 miles of gravel road that are in subdivisions, another 35 miles of paved roads that are in subdivisions, and not all those paved roads you can see from the picture are in great shape. Paving needs, you know, the 2019 is down there because with COVID, we didn't do traffic counts, they wouldn't have been valid, so this is kind of reflecting 2019 data. Typically, when a road hits approximately an ADT or average daily traffic of 300, that's when you want to look at paving it. Definitely when it's an ADT of 400, it's hard to maintain those roads, they need more maintenance, and it's kind of a safety issue to get big equipment out there with the traffic when the traffic volumes get up there. We have nine miles of road that are over 400, we have 24 miles of road that are over 300. Now, that's kind of the paving needs we should be looking at, we just don't have the funds at this point to do it. Bridge projects that we completed or are in progress in fiscal year '20. We did construct four bridges, they were bridge to box culvert conversions. We repaired two bridges. We have eight bridges that are either under contract or currently under construction now that were let, and then we have one bridge ready to let for next year. Of the four fridge, boy, I need to slow down. Of the four bridge to box culvert replacements that we completed this year, this is W-164, that's down in southwestern Lancaster County, it's on West Princeton Road, just a little bit east of Southwest 58. I don't know, I like looking at this picture, it's, it looks neat to me. It replaced a bridge that was closed. We've incorporated some safety features and some also, I guess, resiliency features in this. It has the wings, we have a paved apron between the wings, you can't see it, it's covered with water. You can see the riprap around the wings, and then if you look at the left wing, we actually have a drop structure, which is a pipe that picks up the ditch flow, brings it through the wing, and drops it onto that apron to reduce potential for erosion. Now, and then we add riprap on the outlet. Now, this has been seeded and growth has happened, so this would look quite a bit different. Another safety feature is this box culvert's longer, so it moves the hazard out away from the traveled way. So, box culverts are nice, they're great if you can keep the stream from eroding, which that's what the apron does, that'll be there for 100 years, and relatively low maintenance. We had four of those total that we completed last year. Bridge repairs, kind of did a little bit of innovative stuff. Hickman via it out south of Hickman on South 68th and F-44, which is on Northwest 48th between Air Park and US 34, had some voids under the approach lab. These are paved roads coming up to it, and they have a concrete approach lab to the actual bridge. There were some voids showing up. Now, it's not really a safety issue because that is a structural, remember, you could not have anything down there. However, we came in and have a contractor, Eurotech, that came in and used foam to stabilize the soil and then also fill the void, and to stabilize the soil will reduce any future erosion from happening, we hope. Q-72, this is a bridge repair, a closed bridge that we are doing on West Pioneers. This structure was closed because it had, the wings were separated from the abutment, and they were having erosion. We contracted with a consultant to give us a design, and we've replacing the back wall and the wings with sheet pile and putting a dead man to tie it back. We'll have that filled back in, hopefully open again next week. Okay. Projects that we completed, we completed 15 miles of asphalt overlay, two miles of new pavement. We did no grading, or you know, we didn't grade any projects for pavement, and we didn't do any engineering for future paving projects in '20. New pavement, I really like this because we got to, one, incorporate some safety features with this, and it's really going to help some with the Lincoln South Beltway detour traffic from 68th and other roads. We build a 28-foot top, normally we have 12-foot lanes, and then you have a turf shoulder out there. We have actually 14-foot lanes that we stripe at 12-foot. That gives a little bit of forgiveness when people run over, it helps us maintenance-wise, and it's a safety thing because we have less problem maintaining the shoulder, and we don't have the shoulder drop-off. And then we incorporated rumble strips. Rumble strips are a proven safety feature that when you start to run off the road, you hit the rumble strips and it wakes you up and you stop looking at your phone and stay back in your lane. So, it reduces roadway departure and run-off-the-road crashes. Bridge projects that we've proposed, we have one bridge to be constructed, we have one bridge to be repaired this coming year, and we have four additional bridges in design. Several bridges that were contracted in fiscal '20 will be constructed through this coming fall and next spring. Road projects proposed for next year, seven miles of asphalt overlay, this would be the second-stage pavement that Alan had mentioned. 21 miles of pavement preservation projects, we want to try to get a pavement preservation system in place so we preservation system in place so we don't have to overlay as often, you know, and then we are engineering twenty-four miles of roadway, Alan mentioned Ninety-Eighth Street. Major emphasis will continue to be maintaining our pavements. County's been working with the Nebraska Department of Game and Parks and Department of Transportation to overlay some roads down around Wagon Train and the Hickman area using state rec road funds. We're still working with them to try to get that accomplished. Hopefully that'll happen next year. Other projects proposed are, we partnered with the Lincoln MPO, using LCLC funds for the design and construction of the Ninety-Eighth Street corridor from Old Chaney to A and then from A to O Street, which is new alignment. And then we'll have a paved connector up there, and that's projected to have a major amount of traffic on the day it opens. You know, people will stop going to Eighty-Fourth and try to go to there. Also, we anticipate that the East Beltway corridor protection is going to trigger some additional needs to purchase right-of-way. Future forward focus on North Fourteenth Street, we have three current projects that were replacing bridges with box culverts between Arbor Road and Waverly Road. One of those is nearly complete, we hope to have those finished up by first part of November. And in fiscal year twenty-one, the big bridge that we're doing is F-88, it's north of Waverly Road, we will be doing that. And then at the same time, we're going to be reconstructing the rest of the pipes and box culverts in that corridor. So, once we get done with it, the end of next year, we'll be in pretty good shape, we'll put new pavement on it maybe in the following year, and North Fourteenth will be done for a long time, I hope. Proposed bridge projects. Sorry, I've got to look, I got to get them to make it bigger for me next time. You know, bridges that are on that map are closed. We have bridges with blue dots that are under contract, and bridges with blue X's are the ones that we're doing with Maintenance Forces. Q-72 on West Pioneers is one of those we're doing with Maintenance Forces. The remaining bridges, we don't have funding for them, hasn't been identified, could be closed for several more years. These are going to be bigger structures, they're going to take longer to design, longer to permit, and cost more money. Proposed projects for twenty-two, twenty-six, we're going to really work on maintaining the county roads. We're going to do the engineering permitting and right-of-way acquisition for the safety project on Saltillo Road from twenty-seventh, excuse me, from Twenty-seventh to Sixty-Eighth or Seventieth. It's kind of a different location because the state's putting a roundabout in there. So I don't know what to call it, but I'm going to call it Sixty-Eighth. And then, of course, as I mentioned, the engineering permitting and design of the Ninety-Eighth Street corridor in the next five years. You know, let's hope for another mild winter and spring, I don't want to have to look and be able to get a picture next year to show you that looks like this. Do you have any questions? Oh, and here's Pam.
Good afternoon, Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. I apologize for being late, I was nominated for an Inspire Award today, and so we went to lunch and then got here as soon as we could. And I do want to thank Mr. Legg for preparing and giving the presentation this year. It's great to have an assistant engineer.
Questions for Pam, or?
I was noticing in the program funding summary that the bridges from last year to this year are cut drastically. Is that due to funding from the county, or is that due like from grants, or?
So the answer to that question is yes. So what's really happened with this is a couple of things. As we got in our FEMA money last year, we asked for additional spending authority because we had prepared the design for the structures we'd been awarded funding for. So we tried to push that money out as quickly as possible. Last year, we built probably a record number, rebuilt a record number of structures in county engineering. When I came to this year, I have a number of things that have happened to the budget. The first thing that is rather tragic, and you might not have thought about, but if you take pause, it will seem very logical, is we get approximately nine point four million dollars a year from highway allocation dollars, gas tax. That projection has been reduced by a million and a half, where normally we would expect it to have, you know, probably a three or four hundred thousand dollar increase. So we took that reduction, and then sadly, the commissioners reduced my budget request by another three point eight million dollars. And so if you're to look at the Bridges Special Road Fund, where we construct new bridges and new roads from, we will be building one lone bridge, which is Bridge F-88 on North Fourteenth Street, for the cost of approximately one point seven five million dollars. And what I have continually said when I have spoke to this group and when I speak to other groups is, where we're being funding and accounting engineering is consistently one and a half to one percent of our critical needs. And if you can wrap your head around that, the two thousand eighteen Infrastructure Task Force Study done by Olson and Associates stated that our critical funding needs were three hundred million dollars. And so, and those are, of course, two thousand eighteen dollars prior to the flood of two thousand nineteen. And here we are, once again, at one point seven five million. And so what I have repeatedly asked the commissioners is, if not now, then when? We continue to be, day by day, in a crisis state. Mr. Legg and I dread the next phone call of someone saying, hey, I think something's wrong with my road. And by the way, if we get those calls, what we usually know is something's wrong with the road. In the last eighteen months, we've had twenty unexpected pipe cave-ins, where someone comes out and there's a big hole that's four to eight feet deep in the road and the pipe has failed. We're too far, way too far near the edge. And so, you know, I will continue to seek other funding. Mr. Legg has been instrumental to the team in seeking federal safety funds, county bridge match funds, and other, other federal funds. But we really have knocked on the door of every possible resource that we can find in order to find a way to better fund these structures. And sadly, it continues to be the last thing that the county commissioners consider funding, the last thing. And in fact, this last year, they funded ninety-nine percent of every other department's budget request. And then they cut ours to balance the rest. And so it continues to be a very, a very sad state.
Any other questions for Ms. Dingman or Mr. Legg? No? Okay. Any testimony and support? Any testimony and support today? Okay. How about testimony and opposition? All right. Staff questions? Well, I'm going to assume the applicant doesn't have a rebuttal since we didn't have any testimony.
I would move with close and public carry.
That was Edgerton.
Thank you. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
I would also move that we find the one and six plan in general conformance with the comprehensive plan.
Second? Discussion? No? I think the county engineering staff does a good job of managing what they have and doing what they can with what little funding they have. I am disappointed that, you know, the funding continues to go down when we need more, not less. Jerry?
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
For anyone not, for anyone here wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda, they may do so now. Do I have anyone? Okay. So we are going to switch over now from Lancaster County Public Hearing to a briefing.
Should we move to adjourn?
No, they told me not to.
Okay.
Okay, Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department will just continue on the meeting. What we'd like to go now is a presentation and chance for questions and answers to go over Transitional Living, our new text amendment. We're also very fortunate that we have staff members here from Nebraska Office for Courts and Probation, and I probably said their name wrong, I get it wrong every time. Okay. But, so I'll have a little bit here, then they will have a chance to speak and go right ahead, I think, at this point, if you have questions for them or for me during the presentation, feel free to jump in. So... Holding on just a moment here. Doesn't like you today. Worked out fine for the county. While she's getting that set up, generally, as you recall, we had two text amendments in front of you, or two special permits in front of you that had to deal with alternative to imprisonment, which is the current term that we have in the zoning ordinance in regards to group living circumstances, where primarily the persons who are residing there are residing there because they're out of the corrections system. But currently, that... Let's see.
Ah, maybe?
But currently, that text, our current text just says a special permit, and the special permit requires for you to review it, but does not have any particular conditions. So going back, oh, thank you very much. Down arrow, thank you. Okay. So, part of what, we've been looking at this for several months, actually from the beginning of the year when the first special permit was submitted, we've been gathering information, we had an open house in August. And while this is a land use issue, one of the comments we heard at our open house is that it's a very human issue, and we actually very much agree with that perspective, that you can't take the human element out of this. There's concerns of neighbors, there's concerns of the people who are residing there, of the people who are trying to assist people transitioning out of the corrections system. So, we've really been trying to gather a lot of information here, and we'll talk about the various groups we've met with. The moratorium that was passed by the City Council on any new applications expires November sixteenth. And so we've had a pretty accelerated process, where maybe we might have put together a working group and had a lot more public meetings, we've had to progress fairly quickly. As I briefly mentioned, our alternative to imprisonment, it was actually, prior to two thousand five, it was lumped in with group homes. And in group, and in two thousand five, it was split out from group homes, as a result at the time of a potential lawsuit about how we handled group homes and persons with disabilities. It was split out because people who were residing in that facility, that are just, they're solely because they're out of the corrections system, that was not considered a disability, so it was set up as a separate special permit. We didn't have any applications for fifteen years, until we had two this year and a lot more interest in this topic. So, I've gone over a few of these things, but would note, people who are now what we would call transitional living, it could be because they're there because of pre-release, work release, probation, parole, a lot of different aspects, but it's not necessarily there as an alternative to imprisonment. That's one of the main reasons we felt like we needed to have a better, more accurate name, is for these folks, they could be out living on their own. They are not here because, they're here because they're not in prison, they've already been released appropriately or in our, having the ability. So with that, I am going to turn it over, we have Shane Stutzman, Tyson Jenkins, and Hannah Glenn, all here from the state, and I'm not sure who's going to start first, but I'll turn it over to them. We have one question first.
All right, just really quick, why, if it's transitional living, will there be some differentiation to transitional living for this population versus like transitional living in the HUD homeless population?
This text amendment is strictly for people who primarily, the persons in there are coming out of the corrections system.
But that is specifically in there, so it does, they're different?
Correct.
Great, okay, that's it, I just wanted to double check, thanks.
Here's where I'm supposed to be. Hi, everybody, I'm Shane Stutzman, S-H-A-N-E-S-T-U-T-Z-M-A-N. I am the Assistant Deputy Administrator for the Nebraska Administrative Office of the Courts and Probations, so we have long titles today. With me is Tyson Jenkins, he is the Director of Field Services, and Hannah Glenn is our Transitional Living Specialist. So we hope to be able to answer any questions you might have today around transitional living. Just to give you a little bit of history, this, we got into the business of, or the partnership with transitional living in two thousand fifteen, when the Nebraska Legislature passed LB-605 and Ten-Ninety-four. And what that means is, historically, probation has been pre-incarceration, so that legislation gave us supervision over lower-level felonies, where historically, the Department of Parole had been responsible for all felons coming out of the institutions. Where do I go from there? So...
I have a question about that. Can you tell us, or give us some examples of what a lower-level felony would be?
Absolutely. So, when you think of, there's four classes of felonies, ones and twos are the higher, more serious charges, those are all with the Department of Parole. We take the class threes and fours, those are lower-level crimes, those are under our jurisdiction now. The difference that I think is important is that the Department of Parole is under the executive branch of government, so the governor with Department of Health and Human Services, Department of Corrections, we, probation, are under the judicial branch of government, so we have different leadership, different policies and practices and such. So what, this is Shane's opinion, but the legislature saw us as being fiscally responsible, we have a lot of collaboration with county governments and city governments across all ninety-three counties in Nebraska, and they entrusted us to take this population that now is required to have a period of community supervision upon release. Historically, you could jam your time, so an individual would go to get sentenced to incarceration and say, I don't want to do this, you're programming, community supervision, I want to do my entire sentence and just be released. That is no longer an option. These individuals are now required to serve a period of community supervision under our watch as well as paroles. So what that meant for us is we had a new kind of population coming out of the prison system, as well as the county jails, and we saw that we were really struggling for housing opportunities for these people that was safe and sober living. Many of them were homeless, or, you know, we couldn't keep track of them because we don't generally arrest people just for not, for being homeless, or they were going into the missions and shelters where we didn't feel like it was an appropriate placement for them as well. So what, what we do in our world is we initiate what's called a service definition, we, we put it out there to our communities and say, we have this need, can you help us? And that's where the transitional living houses began to appear more across the state. So we have three levels of transitional living. We have the halfway house, which is a bit unique in that it is a treatment service, and that is governed by a licensure board through the Department of Health and Human Services. We then have transitional living with programming and transitional living without programming, and those have different service definition expectations. So how can I answer your questions?
Going back to, I think, something Tracy said earlier, just to give us a flavor for the difference between a class one and two felony versus a class three or four, like, can you give examples of what might be in that three to four? What types of crimes versus, just to get a sense for the difference between?
I should make Tim's...
Does that make sense?
I should make Tim C come out here and tell you this, assign this to you, but...
Just a couple of examples, I just want to get a sense.
Sure, so if you want to typically look at statistically what that looks like, felony ones and twos are murder, rape, headline grabbing things. Traditionally, our largest population would be a felony four type population, and the vast majority of those are substance use related. So whether it's possession of a felony grade amount of a controlled substance that led to an incarceration event in that capacity. The second part, to piggyback a little bit on what Shane said before, that goes along with 605 when it was passed, is that the court, particularly for those felony fours, was to consider probation before they consider incarceration. So it really has to justify why sending somebody to incarceration. This was about prison overcrowding and revolving doors and things of that nature. And not only did the legislature look at that we had these, we had vast experience and resources, which Shane spoke about, built-in infrastructure to kind of handle that type of case management, but when the court typically before, they might have considered, were you appropriate for probation because you had support systems, one of those being safe and sober living? Now, the court really can't use as a determination to not sentence you to probation. So now even on non-incarcerated individuals, we have a large amount of people that reside in these facilities statewide, not just in the city of Lincoln, but statewide, that did not spend any time in prison, but they're, have a community supervision expectation, and when the probation office, as part of the pre-sentence of execution to the court, or upon the intake with the individual, determined that their current living residence was not on that Maslow hierarchy of needs appropriate to get you to change your behavior at all for successful probation things, whether that's you're historically couch hopping with all of your friends who happen to also be felons, and in not a sober living environment or anything like that, that there's no reasonable expectation that we can even start you down the path of any sort of recovery, whether it is substance abuse related or behavior related, that that's not conducive. Shane also spoke about the three levels of services, also important to know within that service definition, this is not a long-term thing. This is meant to be a short-term intervention to get you stabilization, so that probation officer, or parole officer, or any other sort of community service, because there's lots of people in there that are not under our purview at all, along with that provider, are working together, so after a period of, let's say, 84 days, we have an alternative plan for you. And that alternative plan may be that you are going to a shelter, but we've given you some interventions and some resources that you can survive in that capacity, because the shelter may not be a safe and sober living environment. So what can we intervene in the interim? So if that's the road you do have to go down to, we were able to partner together to at least give some chance of success for what that looks like. Does that answer your question along with my?
It does, if I can follow up.
Yeah.
So as every individual gets to the end of their prison term, or whatever, whatever that might look like, even if it's not involved, your, your office evaluates which of these three options would best fit that situation, is that correct?
That is correct, so that's based off of needs. So for the first one, for halfway house, that has to be from a medical necessity evaluation need that says, you know, mostly that's maybe like an IV-using, drug-active individual that needs that super high-level intervention of therapeutic and housing support. The other ones we look at were the risk and need and responsiveness, and that's kind of the things we live by, and how we do our business is just really assessment-driven, need-driven, risk-driven, and then those other types of things. And then, you know, with that, we make the determination of, okay, this is the level of service you need. Responsive needs might be, well, you have this job maybe you're going back to, so let's try to put you in an area of whatever city that's closest to that, or that, you know, this provider takes this certain type of individual, whether it be gender-specific, male or female, or younger or older, or different types of offenses, that best match that. It is also important to note that we are an open provider network, so with that, we also let the individual have some sort of say in regards to what their intervention strategy is going to be that best suits them. We try to be things like trauma-informed, so when we place females that maybe have some trauma events with a male, we may want to pick that certain house manager area that is best suited for their type of comfort and success in order to put that around. So there's a scientific thought of it, but as well as just a human thought of what's it going to take to do that. And we have trained individuals, and we've been learning, Shane said, we've only been doing this for, you know, we're going on our fifth year, so it's relative in its infancy. We're constantly evolving and learning as we go through what that looks like.
I think it's also important, you know, as Tyson said, these, these facilities or resources have been around a long time, so many of you are probably familiar with St. Monica's, or Houses of Hope, or the Curtis Center, the Mental Health Association, so this is not a new enterprise, but we have, it has expanded in the last year for sure.
Well, and I think that's where my question is going to come from, because being familiar with places like Houses of Hope and St. Monica's that are nationally accredited and follow all sorts of other standards, that feels different than somebody opening a house and putting together a program plan, and then how much supervision is there? What is that supervision? And five hours of programming a week could be having people watch a video versus more intensive. So what is the, when it says supervised transitional living, so that it's safe and sober housing, I'm familiar with what the other adult providers are doing, like Houses of Hope, or St. Monica's, or what youth providers are doing because of the licensing regulations. And what I was hearing from neighbors who were concerned, who fully support the need for community-based living for these folks, and don't have an issue with somebody being in their neighborhood, but have more of a concern with what's the level of supervision and licensure and oversight of those people who are choosing to get in this, when it may look like they're doing it because it's $93 a day.
Yeah, and I completely understand some of the confusion, so probation's role is around case management and service management, whereas the zoning and the oversight is not our, under our purview. And so we, as Tyson said, we're getting smarter, we're trying to amp up some of the expectations, and we've appreciated the input that we've received from your people, as well as other municipalities, to get better about how we're doing this and how we can, community safety is our number one priority, always, but then we also have an obligation to try and help these individuals change their behavior. So I completely think that's reasonable.
Right, so if, if you have eight women who do have substance abuse and trauma history, because if you've been incarcerated for a felony, that's traumatic, so.
Sure.
So what is the level of supervision that is required from a program standpoint?
From a program, you mean on the provider themselves?
Uh huh.
I think it's important to understand that as we define supervision, that is the role of our probation officer.
So probation officer is providing their supervision. We had, we've had two different people come in before the commission.
Providers.
Providers, talking about in writing, well, they have 24-hour a day, but then, under questioning, it's like, well, somebody could stop by, or somebody lives 10 miles, so it isn't 24-hour a day, that's fine, they're adults. Sometimes there's two people, sometimes there's one person, but is there anything in the program plan for if they're receiving the financial benefit for providing services, beyond the five hours of programming a week, what else are they expected to do?
So within that, and Hannah can probably speak to that a little bit more, I'll have her come up when I'm done, but each provider, when they submit under those service definitions, give us what they would define their program plan to be. So nobody in their service definition can say, we're going to watch Howdy Doody videos for five hours a week, they're going to say, we're going to do, because art says it needs to be cognitive and behavioral-based and evidence-based in that. So whether that's life skills of, or employment skills or something of that nature, the actual behavior skills, that's our job to do for that looks like. Then the local probation offices develop a relationship with that particular provider in regards to knowing, they have curfew rules. Majority of these individuals that reside in this place are on some sort of electronic monitoring tracking, so whether it's a GPS or some sort of radio frequency. So in regards to movement or compliance around that, there's that expectation. There's the court order in regards to, they have to be employed, or who they can hang around with in that. And that probation officer, that individual who's case-managing that client, collaborates with that provider to see what's, what that's going to be successful about. And I think this population is different from you and I in the capacity that majority of them, when they do work, they're in the service industry, is not a nine-to-five gig. So you have people coming and going, and you give it time because they're working at a fast food joint at 10 o'clock at night or something, in that capacity, so it's not a door shut at 10, and we lock the door, and nobody comes to nap, because that would not be successful.
That's not, that's not reasonable.
So, but, you know, going through.
Are their staff onsite? That's my question.
Yeah, and right now, we require that they have 24/7 responsiveness. So we are looking at those definitions to consider the 24/7 or 12-hour personnel onsite based on the level of service.
Okay. No, when I hear responsiveness, that means that they don't have to be onsite, it just means that they have to respond.
They do have a responsibility in regards to, we do not pay for services not rendered, so they have within that mechanism some sort of ability to prove that an individual is at least there for that night to receive the funding, to charge the state to pay for the bed for that specific evening.
But you're right, there is, at this point, they are not required to have an employee onsite 24/7. The halfway house does, but the other two lower levels don't.
I'll have, Hannah might be able to address, if you want to talk about the actual application process and what she receives. Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
You know, you have number two and three listed, kind of lumped in as transitional living. Is that a confusing point for community and neighbors who are digging through things and seeing that one has to have A, B, and C, but the other has no program but safe housing?
I would, I would offer, if you're familiar with the Oxford House, or three-quarter way house models, some of those are based on kind of that format, so this is a home of people with like issues that are trying to hold each other accountable and get on their feet. And the other part I think it's important to remember is, this is short-term. We also have 17 reporting centers across the state. What those are is, those were designed as sort of a one-stop shop, so we do cog groups, we do other types of programming, we do all our drug testing. There's two of those reporting centers in Lancaster County. The majority of Lancaster County individuals that are on transitional, or utilizing transitional living, have to be drug tested three times a week. Obviously, COVIDs caused some problems for us around, you know, face-to-face contact and the drug testing, close proximity and things, but that is the expectation here in Lancaster County. They are engaged, and so we talk about dosage, the higher the risk, the higher the need, the more, the more involved you need to be in targeted programming around your, whatever your risks are. So, but yes, I could see how a layperson might have some confusion about those two levels, if that's what you're.
Yeah, and both being called transitional living, I think adds to that confusion with, especially with neighbors who see transitional living and think of the higher level and not the lower level.
Well, it's interesting, because we have been talking to many neighborhood associations, last night I was on one on a driveway and had my lawn chair, and just to try and inform people who are interested. I, of course, would be, you know, as a mom and a grandma and a property owner and all that, would also be interested to know, and so I think sometimes it's just helpful for them to understand, you know, how the whole system process, what that looks like, and we're happy to answer any questions when those folks call us.
You used to call it, you as a city, called it, alternatives to imprisonment.
Yeah.
Then there's an article in the paper that says they're putting a memorandum on halfway houses, would that say, that label is super important to the health of their resources?
Right, yeah.
Because that's not true for what that looks like, so I think that's, that can be very confusing.
I have, I have trouble understanding how somebody is rehabilitated where they're in transitional living with no program. I question whether that should even be an option.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's a good point, Dick, but the thing is, they're in programming with us, so they're not in programming with, they may just need a place to stay. And we, they may be in intensive outpatient treatment, where they go three times a week for three hours each visit, they may be in an employment training program, they may have stable employment, but they don't have a place to live. And so there's, again, back to that risk, need, responsiveness, what Tyson referenced, every one of our individuals have different risks, and different needs, and different supports. Some of them may not have transportation, you know, so that can also be a barrier to getting where they need to be, and we problem-solve and case-manage around all those types of individual issues.
I think a good example of that one right there is somebody who's coming out of work release, they have 75% of the funds saved up.
Tyson, can you come over to the microphone? Thank you.
So how many transitional living without programming is in Lincoln?
Probably two.
So two? There's only two in the city of Lincoln that meet that final definition? People that.
How many are there with, with programming?
Gosh, I don't know my list exactly, there's 11 total, I would say there are probably, there's two, one halfway house, so that would be like eight with programming, and then the remainder without.
So eight with programming, two at that lowest level, one at the highest level.
And those two are the ones that just have three people living there, right?
I don't, not necessarily, that's, that's not necessarily true, but they are the, because I don't know how they are zoned.
Okay.
You know, they may or may not be, but depending on where they are and how they're zoned, could, it could potentially be more than three.
I'm only aware of two that have three unrelated people, is that correct?
We'll get to that in a minute.
Okay.
Tom, I think you had a question?
Yeah, so could you describe to me, because what I'm understanding, correct me if I'm wrong.
Sure.
What I'm understanding is folks prior to 2015 would be released into the community under the supervision of their probation officer, but not necessarily required to go through this process. Now, post-2015, we have both, we have both, so it seems to me as though we're adding another layer of community support and supervision since 2015. Is that my understanding that correctly?
Sure.
Okay, so, so while folks may be concerned about the group living environment, really, since 2015, there's an additional added layer of community support and programming being met for these individuals than existed prior.
Yeah, you go to 2014, all these same people were here, it's just they weren't accountable to anybody.
Sure.
So they would get out of prison, and they were living wherever they wanted to live because they didn't have to drug test, or go to programming, or have a curfew, or have GPS. Now they have those things, and those things won't be successful if, at the same time, I'm living under a bridge.
And so would it be fair, although there is an additional higher level requirement of, of programming than you would have had in 20, there's a higher level of requirement than just say, this person's your landlord.
Yes.
But on the other hand, a fair amount of the programming that these people are receiving are coming from probation and not from the actual service provider landlord-type provider.
You think about it as, in a way, yes, if, everybody stays in their lane. We don't do treatment.
Sure.
Our treatment providers do treatment. The housing providers don't do behavior change, their job is to get them within that time period ready to live on their own.
Independent.
Whether that's savings, budgeting, or just looking for apartments, or if the case we are finding other appropriate places where that lives. So they're in their lane, their idea is to get them out of the need of short-term housing.
Sure.
We do all the stuff around behavior change, our treatment providers do all the stuff around mental health and drug use, so we work as a collaborative team of everybody taking their own section of the wheel, so it starts spinning in the right direction.
Right, but the house, the person that's helping these individuals by providing housing and some level of programming are not the pri, are most often not the primary level of, not the primary provider of services.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up? Because I truly am a layperson, you mentioned layperson before, a lot of the people who come and testify are laypeople, but so are we. So what I need for you guys to explain to me in my role as a planning commissioner is we vote on the, on accepting the premise that the provider, I'm concerned about the provider, the provider of the housing, we're voting on place and land use and that provider's application to meet certain conditions with this amendment, or with, within the text, to do what needs to be done from a very technical planning standpoint, right? Are we able to, or me, or are we able to understand that when a provider comes to us with an application, that all of the programming and, I don't know if this is the proper term, but the, but the human factor, we talked about that in the first slide, or the social issues that are wrapped up about this condition at this place, that's already, you guys have handled that. And let me give you a little context, there are so many applications that we get with other kinds of projects, where, for example, the health department has information for us that we are not experts in, same thing with like traffic engineers, they, we say to them. They, we, we say to them, does this work? Are you okay with this? Yes, we're okay with this. For me, that's, that's what I rely on. I mean, I can, I can deal with the, the relevant planning issues. But what I have a hard time with is all this background of what got these people to this provider and can this provider provide what you need that provider to do? So that we can deal with it from a physical planning standpoint. That's, that's where I, that's where I need some clarification.
I'll let Hannah talk about the application stage because a lot of that would answer, I think, a lot of your questions as that goes.
I must have triggered something here with David coming up.
I was just gonna chime in here because I was gonna come up anyways, but your, your question and the way you framed it was perfect. First of all, I want to thank you all for coming today because what, what's happened in this process is that from the, from the planning department city side of this, that we're proposing something that is land use-based, zoning-based. That's what we are proposing and that's what we're asking you to act on. But it's clear, and, and our conversations with the community through this process, it's clear at that point too, but it's clear in this discussion that there are these other questions on the state level. And, and I think everybody's aware that there's concern about what level oversight, what type of programming, and how does that work? What I want to be clear about though today for you is that we are going to ask you to act on the zoning and land use piece of this. And it doesn't mean that these other issues go away, but that has to be handled at a state level. If something is going to be changed or if something's going to happen at that level. There is, there is going to be an interim study with the legislature. I literally just had a lunchtime meeting with Senator Wisher and then we had other members of the community, you know, talking about this topic. So there are going to be other things continuing to be discussed. But we're going to keep moving through our process because we have a moratorium that's going to expire on November sixteenth. So basically, my overall recommendation to you is to focus on those land use and zoning issues. Make sure that they make sense and they're what we should be doing as far as the city of Lincoln is concerned. And get those in place so that we have that level of regulation in place that, and we think we're all admitting that is lacking right now. And then we, I think there's going to be an ongoing conversation at the state level. So I get, I'm not going to be, I don't know if I'm going to be perfect in that prediction, but that's how I view it right now.
But, but David, I, in the, in the two issues that we've had come before us, there, there are multiple, there are multiple planning commissioners that because we are supposed to also beware of public health, safety, and welfare, this underlying stuff comes up. And so back to my point, if, if there was something in the report or testimony that said, what you just basically said is, yeah, it's being dealt with and there's, it's going to be dealt with more, you know? That gives us at least a basis that we can say from a land use standpoint, yeah, that this is okay to go forward with. That's what I'm concerned about with, because I had those, I heard those comments.
Yeah, and I was just gonna say to Dennis's point, I mean, I think about when we have had small solar farms and the detail around the, the volume and the sound and the shape, there are so many things that go into putting up some electronic in a field, which to me is very different than housing maybe eight people together without health department inspection. And I understand some of that is, will have to be dealt with at the state level. But I mean, I think that's where some of those questions, that's when I have people in the community talking to me about it, that's where they're coming from is.
Well, what I think of is very similar to that. When we have the poultry farms, they have to do that checklist, you know, for the department of whatever in the state, you know, and so we can see, okay, they've addressed this, that, and the other thing. I would feel much more comfortable if we had something like that saying, yes, this provider has been vetted. They've, you know, submitted an application process and, and they've passed through the state or whatever it may be.
You know, when I think about this, sometimes I, I often think about a restaurant. You know, we have a level of, of provider and oversight. The, the planning commission does not get involved in whether or not a restaurant cooks their chicken to an appropriate temperature. The planning commission says you are, you are allowed to operate a restaurant here. There are other bodies that oversee the cooking of the chicken. I don't know that this is vastly different than that.
And David, one suggestion would be for you to say at the public hearing, just what you have said.
Sure.
That we are here today to look at land use that's being handled elsewhere. That might eliminate.
And, and I, I thank, I thank you Dennis for kind of putting in that context because I think that we, we can say that. We basically have been saying that.
I know.
But if, if it's, if it would help the process, our, our process to kind of clarify that, we're more than willing to do that.
I just think there is so much misunderstanding about what we can and can't do or what we should and shouldn't do.
Right, I agree, I totally agree.
Well, I do believe in one of the reports that came, one of the staff reports that came through on one of those previous applications. It stated that there was no, um, there was no, you know, it was about the process. They were saying that there was no approval process through the state or what have you. And as a result, it was up to each individual community to decide what the standards were.
Right.
And that as commissioners was like, okay, well, we knew there's a restaurant association or, you know, we knew that process is in place. We're not sure this process is in place. And so we, having that clarification, that that's, is, is part of the deal. I mean, that, that is the distinction.
And again, I, I mean, our colleagues in the state that are here today and they'll be available to the city council and we'll brief them next week. So the, the idea here is to also try to gain that clarity at this time too, for that purpose, which is to make sure that there's an understanding that there is a state-level discussion of what is being done and things like that. So that's, that's been the, the strategy of trying to get to a point where you feel confident in making a decision.
Was there also confusion with the statement made at city council that they would be looking at more regulations? Did, did I misunderstand that or not?
Well, I think I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask our state colleagues to answer that because I don't, I honestly can't say that that is happening or not.
No, I, you know, I just think that they made it publicly. As I remember, they kind of said publicly, one of them, that they'd be looking at more. And that then, are we the more for land use or are they trying to do your job?
And that goes to kind of what everybody said. So we're not a regulatory authority in that capacity. We hold each provider, we pay, we publicly pay for a service that somebody says will provide. We don't pay for the building. We don't pay for anything other than the service, the port and service, whatever it is. It's the same thing. So we talk about a restaurant or something like that and I hear things like solar panels, all the rest of that. That's because you're speaking of a licensure authority that says you're okay to do this. We're not a licensure authority. We're not. We will hold with, and then you talk about which each city, which is a good comment because within there we say, you will be licensed, you will be registered in whatever your city or municipality ordinance says you have to be. So if Lincoln says, and right now the one you guys exist in there has like two sentences, right? And if they're within those two sentences, then that's all we can ask because that's what the city of Lincoln says. If the Lincoln, City of Omaha says all the transitional housing providers have to be painted blue, then we'll say, okay, you have to be blue because that's what your city says you has to be. And that's really what we rely on the municipalities for is about the actual brick and mortar structure and the things that go with that, whether that's parking or the building itself and all those other things that we do not have any sort of oversight or regulatory authority to do. That's civics, executive branch, judicial branch, city municipality separation of powers as it goes with that. We provide a funding source, financial assistance to individuals that need a service.
So who has the regulatory responsibility to say, you know, yes, they're licensed to provide this?
There is no license to provide.
There isn't. That's the requirements about.
I was just speaking, I mean.
Hypothetically, if there was a licensure to be created around this, then it would fall under the Health and Human Services Department of the Executive Branch. Similar to what the halfway houses do within that. But, and then, and within that though, and you know, I mean, when an applicant applies for this, they do have to check a lot of boxes in our end. And then they may not come in that we know they're already doing this because in most, ninety-nine percent of the cases, particularly since 2015, is new people coming into the arena along with the ones that already existed like Kurna said, and things of those nature. And then through our partnerships with our field officers and our local management, such as in Lincoln, the chief probation officer, his supervisors, his staff, they collaborate with us. When they find something that is outside of what that expectation is, we work with that provider, whether it's through just a conversation to improve about what our expectations are, if it comes to a level of an investigation and some sort of intervention and improvement plan, or if it was ever get to the higher end that we says, we're no longer going to do business with you because you're in violation of what those service definitions are.
David, if it's my understanding of what I've read so far, what you would be bringing to us as a proposal, won't even have a public hearing. It will, it will be approved by the planning department and that's it.
So that the, currently it is a special permit, which requires a public hearing to the planning commission. What also happens with a special permit is that there can be, and probably I would suggest there would be if we kept at that, that level, inconsistencies of what the requirements are on a case-by-case basis. The value of a conditional permit is that you have six, seven, eight, ten requirements that if you show that you are doing those things, you get your permit. And we are recommending that that is the right way to handle these. Because the, the key here is that our community identifies what the right conditions are. And as long as they meet those, we, we will then say, you therefore can get this permit and move forward. Now, another part of this proposal is the administrative permit that, to the planning department, which requires an additional step that each of these providers has to provide back to the planning department and say, here's a site plan, yes, here's the parking, basically saying, and included in that is the notification of two hundred feet property owners from that site in order to have them fully move forward with it. So we've added another level of review as well, but you're correct, there would not be a public hearing on it. And as we've discussed that, we believe that that is a value to this use. That it's, that, that as long as those conditions are met, that, that we should not have this use go through that public process.
And if they have a conditional permit rather than a special permit, that permit would go away if they sell that, sell the property?
No.
It still stays with the property?
It stays with the property. And then that's an issue that's been brought up, certainly, and I think it will continue to be brought up. But that administrator permits that if there is a change in, in, in provider and change in ownership is more key to that, they would have to come back in and prove that they are continuing to do that, especially if there's been any changes to the site. But that doesn't change the conditional use that's approved.
But there's, there's no way that the conditional permit or the special permit otherwise would have the ability to remove that property from providing transitional living if they had X number of police calls in a month and so on and so forth. That doesn't exist, right?
No, there certainly is the ability for the city to revoke the permit if there are violations. And if it's proven that they're not meeting the conditions of the approval. But at this point in time, our typical process and procedure is, and requirements is that those permits stick with the land. But no, there's absolutely a procedure. Now, it may not be a very quick procedure, but there'd have to be, you know, recurring problems and violations, but certainly the permit could be revoked. It would have to go through a process for that though.
Good. Would that process be through the planning commission and council? Or is it handled by the courts?
That is a great question. I don't have a great answer to that. I'm gonna point to my, my Steve.
So we're on slide six of thirty-three. So what we've learned here is that when we brief the city council, we'll go through all the slides first. We'll explain what the city proposal is, what's talking about the land use and the zoning. And then we'll talk about the state and what's going on in the inside and, and all their process. So yeah, we get, we have twenty-seven more slides that will go through all of what the city's proposal is. I, I think now that it's kind of clear that we are not going to be proposing that you regulate what's going on in the inside. Our hope here was that a lot, since a lot of questions came up at our hearings and our open house about, well, how is things being handled on the inside? We thought it'd be useful for you all to find out from the state what is going on in the inside, how their programs work. So you understood about that. But yes, we'll get back to now what is our role in this and then what is our proposal as to how we would handle that role.
Well, but the, the testimony we've had from the people that have come up from the neighborhoods that were opposed to it and so on, basically all dealt around the relationship, the personal, related, personal issues. And yet, if, if we are only to deal with the land permit or basis for that, there needs to be some pretty good education of the, of the community, then that, that's out of our purview.
And, and that was part of what this presentation was presenting when we were at the mayor's neighborhood roundtable on Monday and the Near South Neighborhood Association, and also when we had our public open house was trying to help explain this role. So I, I think it'd be helpful if we, so right, to go back now to the state to answer your questions about their role in the process. And then I can continue on with, with the presentation about what we're proposing.
I'll, I'll extract myself now so that we can keep moving forward. But I would want to reiterate though that our perspective is that we should take some action on what's being proposed on the zoning and land use side of things because we have an end of the moratorium coming on November sixteenth. It'll be, we will be in a better spot if we have updated and improved regulations for this use, regardless of what else changes or is discussed at the state level. Because that is our, that's our job to work on those things. And so I would, I would recommend to you to kind of make sure that that is a focus of work. While we, the community certainly has and will continue to have this conversation. I don't think this is going to go away magically because we adopt zoning regulations for this use. But I would ask you to focus on that for this work and then we'll let that discussion continue at the state level as well.
But the public will be here the thirtieth to talk about this.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so there, and we need to get our act together pretty quickly.
And what I'm hearing from the state is the fact that if the city council decides that they want to put, put in some requirements for it to be licensed here in Lincoln and they pass that, that that would be the parameters by which the state would, for Lincoln, would, would operate. Is that correct?
Candy's being bandied about here. I think technically, yes. However, right now, there's not a focus on that level of, we're not discussing right now anyways, another level of licensure for these. So what's, what's being proposed right now is what, what you've seen so far from us.
Yeah.
But you're right. I mean, technically, if there's another couple of things that are adopted by the city council, that that would end up becoming the regulations as well. That's right. Okay, I'm gonna back away now. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
David.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask the state folks, this is what I want to know, sorry. What does an applicant have to go through? Like what steps to be approved or however you want to word it to even become a landlord for transitional living?
Absolutely. So there is a process that mirrors a lot of the processes that, it, it mirrors the exact process of becoming any sort of registered service provider for any service with probation or with the, with the courts. So if you wanted to provide IOP or residential treatment or things like that, it, it mirrors that same process, plus a little extra step. So there's an application that gets submitted. It's just kind of your general, who are you, where are you located, who's the contact, how do you want to be referred to, that kind of stuff. And with that, they have to submit a program plan. So for each service, we have a corresponding service definition. Those are all on the website and I think I've sent them to, to the planning department. So I'd be happy to send them out again. But if you want to know specifics of what we require for each level of service, that's found in the service definition. So when they submit an application, you also have to submit a program plan. And that's really where you detail, this is exactly how I will meet your service definition expectations. All that comes to me or another designee. I review it myself or with other members of my, like my team or other designees in my absence. And so we kind of go through and just check off every part of that service definition to make sure that that has been accounted for in their application. If that, if and when that has been established, then they basically are approved to go on to the next level of registration and they register in our registered service provider system. So that's our online system. That's where all the payment systems go through. And as part of that process, they agree to quite a few other things. I don't like the term sign your life away, but they have to basically agree to quite a few things that come along with being a partner with the state of Nebraska. So you have to agree to follow our rules, to follow our regulations. You know, we're not necessarily the easiest entity to partner with because there are a lot of extra steps to go through. We, as Shane and Tyson mentioned earlier, we really pride ourselves as a state agency for being fiscally responsible. So basically, that's what they agree to when they go into that electronic system. So first step is the.
That's nothing different than any other type of business, wanting to do business with the state in Nebraska.
Yep, so they actually have this first step where they, we review the service program plan, all of that. Then you go into the state system, you agree to all these extra things. And then finally, we typically. And then finally, we typically, it's been a little bit different in COVID time, we haven't actually had any new applications come through during that time. But typically, what we would do is it's either myself or somebody that I designate to actually go to the facility to walk through, the same way we would go to check if we're placing somebody on probation back into like their own personal home. We go do home visits, we make sure that this is actually a safe, legitimate place that somebody should be staying. So we walk through the house in that manner. So it's not necessarily in a, any sort of like compliance type, with a compliance set of eyes even, it's just, is this a safe, respectable, sober place that somebody could live and have a chance of being successful? And that's really kind of the last step. And once you get through all of those processes, you go onto our list, and then you would approve, be approved for placement and reimbursement for placements there.
Do you do referral or background checks like you do for group homes or?
So, and this is not, I don't, I'm not the owner of this registered service provider system. So it would mirror what we do for any other service provider in, with the state of Nebraska. So we do, we make sure that they're not on probation themselves, that they don't have any active, active criminal charges, that kind of stuff. That's all part of that, that system. But I cannot speak to the details of it, because I don't actually, I don't manage that piece of the system. I don't know if you guys have more details on that, but there, there are checks that go along with that as well.
Having a, any sort of criminal past does not preclude you from any sort of service with the state of Nebraska in that capacity. It's if you have an ongoing or current, that would, could cause a conflict of interest or something of that nature, then that's not allowable, is what that looks like. If you really think about the overhead investment that it takes to start something like this up, it's going to preclude, it's going to box most people out just because of the front-end costs of purchasing a property and then going through the steps it would take to get there.
And there's specific protocol around that. I think you have to be not on probation or in the active system for at least six months, maybe longer. But there's a written protocol around that issue itself as well.
And with anything, you'll find that, you know, most of our, if you go into a room with 10 people that are licensed drug and alcohol counselors, all 10 of them are ex-alcohol and substance abuse users, because usually that's the people to get in this business, is they had the problem, they got over it, and they want to give back to that particular community. So it wouldn't be surprising if somebody had that in what that looks like, but, you know, that's kind of the game we play within the purview of the business that we do.
Can you tell me now what's different between two and three and number one when you have, when they apply to become one?
So the process for all three is the same. The, the service definitions are all different. They, there's, do you, is that the question? You want to know kind of the breakdown between the levels of service?
Because they're licensed by behavioral health, DHHS, so evidently they have more steps to go through than-
Yeah, so for that one, for halfway house, basically, and the service definitions for that, halfway house, we say, you have to follow all the rules of licensure according to DHHS. And you have to do these extra steps for probation. So you have to do transition planning, you have to be looking at what's next for this person. How do you get to a point of self-sufficiency? You have to agree to participate in our registered service provider system, so that is, that's how you get your money back, that's how, there's reporting requirements that go along with that. So not only do you follow the DHHS licensure rules, but you also have to do this extra little steps to play with probation.
Do you have credential?
Yes, yeah, so the, and for those-
And halfway house really is a medical model of service, and that's where that licensure component from DHHS comes in, because you're providing not just the service of a transitional living, but you have a service intervention of treatment, mental health and substance abuse.
So would it be fair to say that really with just transitional living, it's really just a landlord? I mean-
No, so that, and again, I would encourage you guys to look a little bit more closely. If you really want to know what's in those service definitions, there, there's quite a bit. But we say there has to be orientation involved, you have to have house rules posted and available and discussed prior to somebody entering. You have to do that transition planning. So it's not just, you live here, you pay me forever, and this is your new home, it's where do you go next? And that conversation of where do you go next starts at conversation with that, number one, with that person. There's pieces in there about access to basic needs, so like food, hygiene, medical needs being met. We talk about trauma-informed care and just making sure that we are treating people with respect. So it's, there's a lot more in there required than just somebody getting a payment each week.
It'd be nowhere near landlord. And each of them have their own house rules that just go far beyond what we do. So a lot of our providers have their own internal drug testing, because they don't allow anybody to actively be using, on top of the drug testing we're already doing. Or they have curfews that we may not necessarily have within that court order. I can't think of a landlord that I've ever had that had any sort of intervention strategy like that, that just sent them a check and they made sure it wasn't like-
But I think from your point of view, Tracy, I think that's, that's not an unreasonable perspective, from the planning department's position around zoning.
Oh, yeah, I guess if you're looking at your, your lane versus-
I'm, I'm thinking, I mean, you're going to say, yeah, there's, it would be hard to start up one of these. Well, in my mind, from the community standpoint, no. If you're a landlord, it's not going to be hard at all to switch over to doing this, because you're probably going to be making more money doing this than just being a regular landlord. So-
But you, you gotta also remember too, this isn't long-term. At a max, they're getting 84 days of support, then you roll over-
Maybe the residents aren't long-term, but-
Well, and I would agree with you in that as well, but I also think that those folks that do it for that reason don't stick around long.
Why? Tell me why? Because that's what the neighborhoods are going to want to know, why?
I would say the extra pieces of, I mean, our registered service provider system is not easy to use. I mean, there are lots of things that have to be documented in there before they can get their money. So it's a, for every single person, they have to go in, they have to create the voucher, accept the voucher, and they have to file that report every week, so, or every month. So in order to get their money, that's a lot more than what a landlord would have to do. There are these additional hoops that they would have to jump through. And they have, in doing so, they have to agree to all those other rules of probation. So it is possible, but me personally, I would be better off not dealing with any of the, the extra requirements over here and just getting my money directly from an individual.
Or having a probation officer call me every day or be in my facility or thing.
That was my point I was going to make. It, it's way harder to be on probation than it is to just go to jail. But these, some of the clients that we deal with will, they test you, you know? It's, it's not for people who don't have a passion for serving this population. And so, but, but I can't disagree. I mean, there are people that have gotten in this that I'm like, okay, but, and they've jumped through all the hoops, but to sustain it and meet the expectations and work with this population and work with probation, it's, you know, it's not for everyone.
What happens if someone fails their transitional living program?
We have people that-
Do they go back to prison then?
That's, that's on the court, so it has nothing to do with the actual transitional living.
Well, I'm going to give you a short answer, so Tyson doesn't give you, you know, the whole long story. But ultimately, if you don't comply with the conditions of probation, we can implement what's called a custodial sanction or place you in, the judge will order it. We ask, we tell the court, the court says yes. You could go to jail for anywhere from three to 30 days, and you come back out, and we're going to try again. And so we go through a process of this before we revoke the probation, you go back to incarceration.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's, you can lead a horse to water and you can't make him drink?
Yeah.
We try and make him really thirsty.
And that, I think that's, that's an important part too, because when somebody does get, we'll say, kicked out of a house, that's more of a community safety concern to me than the person being in the house, honestly. Because once they're not in the house-
Yeah, we have people abscond, you know, that's not uncommon, and we have to get a warrant and look for them, and, you know, not everybody makes it. Not everybody does-
We usually get a second chance.
But we, we do everything we can to, because incarceration isn't the answer for a lot of these people. They're coming back, one way or the other, they're coming back to our communities. And so it's in all our best interests if we can impact and change the behavior.
And we're here today, but if you go into any one of these houses right now, they're not all, have anything to do with us. There's self-pay people in these facilities, there's people under parole, other community agencies-
Federal probation, sure.
That it's not just the state of Nebraska probation. I think that's important, too. We are the biggest people at the table in a lot of respects, but there's other expectations of other entities that are having people in these places. Or people, there's a lot of facilities too, where somebody's successful there, and they pay on their own once they're done getting our financial support. Because our financial support is short-term.
90 days.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. With, there could be extenuating circumstances. COVID, we were a little bit more forgiving on things of that nature.
How'd you come up with eighty-four?
It fit within the math that is the state of Nebraska.
It was based on federal, yeah, handed.
It's 12 weeks, so that was, the idea is if somebody comes out of the institution, maybe without a birth certificate, that's going to take a couple of weeks, and it takes a couple of weeks to get a job. And then it takes another couple of weeks to get your first paycheck. So there's no way we would expect you to have money and be able to get into your own place prior to that. It actually, we started it a little bit, it was eight, six, eight, 12.
I forgot.
So that we, it was kind of, we started, some was only six weeks, then it was eight weeks, then it was 12. And we realized across the board, nobody was getting out of there in six or eight weeks, it was just not happening. So we switched it all to 84 days, 12 weeks. And most people, it's still really tight, that is extremely hard, especially if you come out without a job or without a birth certificate, but it is possible. So that's the majority of what, what folks are doing and able to do at this point, so.
And when you get out of the Department of Corrections, you're given $100. That's it, so, you know.
And everybody comes in, if someone comes out of work release who's been at Kawasaki for six weeks, they'll still make $20 an hour. So they might just need that first week just to find an apartment, and nobody has to stay for 84 days. In fact, our average length to stay in one of these across the entire spectrum is roughly 60-some days. Now, that's a combination of people leaving early and a combination of people never coming back, but, you know, I mean, but that's, that's what that ends up being. So it truly is short-term. So the population you see in the house today, if you come back 60 days from now, five different guys, six different girls, because it is just kind of a, it's transition, we use that word for a reason. It is a transition. It's not a hard, get out the door, shut the gate behind you, good luck type of thing. It's a softer step into whatever's going to be next.
Did we have more questions, or should we continue with our?
Go to slide seven.
Slide seven. I will just say, I thank you guys so much for being here today.
Yeah, it's been helpful.
I, 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 we had a lot of questions from a lot of community concern, and having you guys here today is a huge help that you don't even understand, so thank you.
Can you come back on the 30th? I think we're coming back on Monday to talk to the city council, so.
See, and we-
They're going to have a lot of fun.
We're going to rely just as much on you guys, because whatever you guys put, we want, you know? If you want to say, three parking spots per 12 people, great, let's hold them to that.
Well, I think that there's just so much misconception, you know, like some of the stuff that I've read out in the community is that, you know, these are going to be sex offenders, or these are going to be, you know, hardened criminals. And so I think that's one myth that we have to bust right away, off the bat. And then the other thing that I think that I garner from the community is that we have enough problems with, with problem landlords.
Oh, I'm sure.
And so I, my, me speaking, I don't want this just to be another problem landlord. And so that's why I, I need some kind of reassurance that, you know, this isn't just going to be another one of the 1% that creates problems.
And I think that's where we'd have to collaborate together, we'd have our own little section of that. To your other point, though, I did a random thing after the last Zoom meeting we had where I pulled up the National Sex Offender Registry for the city of Lincoln, and all the dots on there, there was very few dots in our houses, and all the rest of the dots are in every apartment complex, house throughout the entire city. So I mean, it's, that's not where they're at. And if they are, they're there for 84 days and then they're not.
I think the other thing is, you know, we, we want to partner, we live here, we're community members as well, and we, we, it's important to our administrator, our court administrator, that we collaborate with our city and county stakeholders. That's how we do all our, we have 14 probation districts across the state that partner with their county commissioners and county supervisors around their budgeting and spaces, issues, and the state pays salaries and benefits and training. But we really want to be a part of every community that we were, were involved in.
And we're not just having this conversation in Lincoln.
We're having conversations in Kearney and York and other places as well.
And every community is different.
And I appreciate you guys kind of leading, you guys are the furthest along in that. And I continue to reference the, the work that you've done already and just say, hey, you know, feel free to reach out to Lincoln, because they are a few steps along in this, in that process. But it has been a learning experience for, for me, and I think it's been very beneficial, and I look forward to continuing the conversations going forward, too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to Steve and David and Rachel, and they've been terrific to work with, so. Good luck with your other 33 slides. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Have a good day.
You too. So it gets easier now, Steve, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And you just rip through these next 37 slides, right?
But again, I, I think this was immensely helpful, because this was exactly the kind of conversation we had. I, I would note, though, just to follow up on one little part, again, while we brought the Nebraska probation office here today, there could be other people in other programs here. So there could be somebody who's in parole, who did do a class one or two felony, and they're in this house because of parole. This was just, we thought was helpful, because they have been very helpful to us and kind of help explain one, it sounds like a large provider, but not solely the only one that they might be there for. So with that, what we're going to, again, to try to focus on is-
Thank you again.
What kind of-
Thank you.
Regulation is going on about the people in the program? And now to go back to, okay, so what is the land use part of that? And so what I'm also going to try to go here then is back up as to, okay, what do we do today? So today, it is a special permit, and it's in the AGR R1 through R8, and it's by right in the B4, the downtown zoning district. And as I had mentioned before, there's no specific conditions, and the only thing really is it goes to the planning commission. Of course, you can add appropriate conditions, and we did with the two that we had come forward, one of which was approved and one was withdrawn. It's very important to note, this is not the only group living that is in our zoning ordinance. So we have children's homes, which has been very rarely used, we have a few domestic shelters, we have lots of residential healthcare facilities, which is a very broad category, which includes large group homes. So that's why we, we note it. It's not just simply an assisted living facility or a convalescent home. A residential healthcare facility could be a home that has a lot of people there for drug treatment, but also could be there because they are transitioning through the court system or on parole or probation. Dwellings, religious orders, fraternities, sororities, group homes, which we'll talk about more, or even homeless shelters. So one of the things we've been trying, and this presentational note was also the one we did for the public. So some of these things, you old veterans know, but we wanted to explain to the public that, again, a family, there's lots of different kinds of families, this is zoning family, one, two, three people. For the zoning family, it is unrelated persons can live together and be considered a zoning family. So we were trying to remind the public, somebody could rent a house and have three unrelated people there, and that is perfectly illegal. They could all be three people who were in probation or parole or anything else, they could be doing it on their own, or somebody could be assisting them to do it. One to three, there's no particular regulation about that. So part of what is proposed before you is to start with a definition. And the definition here is that it would be a facility affiliated with an alternative to imprisonment program, including, but not limited to, and they may list all the different kinds of programs when there is more than three unrelated persons. Now, you will note the affiliated part of it. And that is because, as you heard today, some of the people there are being provided safe and sober housing, maybe they're being helped with getting a job, maybe they're being helped with life skills, but they're not necessarily being supervised. So we didn't have the word that there's supervision going on there, there, there may be. But most of these kind of facilities, it's trying to have a safe and sober housing, help the people with their skills, get them in, so that they're not on their own, but they're not necessarily there with 24-hour supervision. So we use the term here affiliated, that they're in some kind of a, of a program. So I thought it was also important to talk about what is a group home? Because one of the questions that what came up is, well, hold it, if there's 11 providers in our county and we've only had one approved special permit, how does that math work? and we've only had one approved special permit, how, how does that math work? Well, a group home is where more than three people, but less than sixteen disabled persons are there, who are unrelated, who are receiving therapy or counseling, but not nursing care. A group home can also be basically something like foster care, where your children are being cared for because their parents can't do it. So a lot of our group homes citywide are kind of foster care model. But let's talk about the group homes that are there for disabled persons. Well, disabled persons could be somebody who previously had a drug or alcohol program or dependency. They're now in rehab. And on site, they're receiving ther- therapy or counseling. So as you heard, some of the places that might be, the state calls them transitional living, they come into the city and, oh, they're very actively helping people with therapy on site so they can meet the definition of a group home. And we'll talk about how group homes are, are treated. But that's why you may have some people who are also in a residential healthcare facility. There was a mention made of Nebraska Mental Health Association. They have a special permit for residential healthcare facility on Fifty-Sixth Street, just north of an assisted living facility, which has a special permit for residential healthcare facility, just north of Pioneers. They have more than sixteen people there, and, and they are helping a whole mix of clients. They may be in, out of corrections, and are also having drug dependency, or just drug dependency. And, and, and they need the flexibility, because their clientele and, and service needs are constantly changing. But it's often multiple needs. So a group home and a transitional living will have some similarities. They'll be, both be for more unrelated persons. But a transitional living will be the primary thing you're doing there is you're there because of a post-release or an alternative to really, uh, prison. But you're, you've had your sentence, and you're, you've served it one way or another, or your sentence is to go on to probation. And so that is the primary thing going on there. A group home is, must have therapy or counseling going on, on site. So you can't call yourself a group home, and all you're doing is providing safe and sober housing. There must be some therapy or counseling going on, on site.
Quick question, and I apologize to everyone. Oh, no, I'm, and I am gonna have to leave. I talked to David earlier, so I apologize, I'm gonna have to leave. But he will follow up and fill me in. But I just, that, so it's the primary reason, because the chances that someone who has come from class-three or four felony doesn't have some sort of condition that would qualify as a disability, depression, anxiety, substance abuse, I mean, but it is the primary reason for placement, not a co-occurring kind of thing, right?
Yes, and that the people who are there are primarily there because they are out of the correction system. They, they could also be receiving therapy or counseling somewhere else. But what is going on on site is they're primarily being provided a safe and sober environment.
Thank you.
Okay, so for group homes, because you will have, it's a lot of comparisons to group homes in this, a group home today is also a conditional use in the zoning ordinance. So group homes for decades have not had special permit, public hearings before you. They've been allowed as a conditional use with the condition that they be licensed by the state, and also that there be twenty-six hundred and forty feet, half a mile, between them in the R1 through R3 zoning districts, also AG and AGR, and twelve-hundred-foot spacing in the R4 to R8. So the spacing is for group homes. But note, that is only spacing between one group home and another. It's not between a group home and a transitional living, or a group home and a fraternity, or anything else. It's just one group home, a spacing to another group home. Okay, so back to our August twenty-fifth open house. And I, I will note, we received a lot of comments on that. We've started already to receive a few comments. We're gonna start passing them along, as we normally do, to you, once we have this briefing done. Because people are commenting on very particular aspects of our proposal, and we thought you would have no idea, since we haven't sent it to you yet. So a lot of what we heard is about operations things. Well, the city should have background checks. Well, the city should have its own licensing. Well, the city should check out what's going on. And as David mentioned, our recommendation to you is to let these other agencies handle that kind of issues. Who is the provider, and are other people being handled? But we, the zoning and the planning, will handle the type of land use type of concerns. Now, again, it also doesn't mean that the city role stopped. As you heard, they might walk through the house to say, how's it looking? Okay, is it looking pretty good? They're not doing code checks. But if the house next door is falling apart, and it has, happens to be a transitional living facility, you still have the ability to turn it into building and safety to say, the house is a wreck. I think there's building code violations. Or if there's wild parties going on, you have the ability to call the police on a disturbance call. So the city will continue to have all of those normal functions with a house next door that can be disruptive, whether there's a group home or not. It may could just be any other circumstance. But we're saying, we don't think that the city, the planning department, building and safety, we're not set up to be a licensing agency. Even our health department is not set up to be a court, you know, appropriate type of a licensing agency. So we think in talking to these other agencies, if there's concerns about how they do their job, that is best to, that that is handled with those agencies. And, and not by the city on its own, then, starting to get into the role of licensing.
Steve, Steve, so, so, so back to the question that brought David up here. So we can assume as planning commissioners that when an application, well, it won't come to us anymore if we do the conditional.
Yes.
Okay, never mind. It's gonna go there.
Well, and I'll explain with the permit, what would be the condition then?
Yeah, but, but my point was gonna be is that if, if we ever, if, as planning commissioners have to deal with this issue in one way or another, we can assume that in, in terms of operations questions, that's handled, right?
Yes.
Because that, that's what I was hoping for.
Right, and, and as a matter of fact, the analogy I used was actually the analogy of, of kind of the restaurant. You were here to deal with the restaurant's parking, and maybe where the dumpster is, and how many trips is it generating, and the appropriate setback. You don't regulate the food preparation that's going on. There's somebody else who's doing that. And, and I will note, as a matter of fact, for automobile dealerships and childcare. Both of those have to, when they go to get their state license, have to get a letter from the city confirming they have the proper zoning. And we're actually
Fair to also include alcohol in that? I mean, I feel like we approve the zoning for alcohol, you know, like on sale, off sale. But they have to, you know.
Well, that, that, there's a slight nuance there, that I'm not a hundred percent sure when you go to get your alcohol license with the state, that they absolutely require you to, to check off your boxes that you've got your special permit with the City of Lincoln. I'm, I'm not, I'm not familiar enough with their process. But I do know the process, because we get the zoning confirmation letter requests all the time, where somebody wants to open a car dealership, they, they come in. I don't meet the space, there's a hundred-foot spacing requirement for a car dealership in certain commercial districts. They don't meet it. We don't give them the letter. They don't get their, their dealership license. That's that. And so what, we're also encouraging the state in our discussions with the state is, is they shouldn't provide, in, in City of Lincoln, zoning jurisdiction, unless there's a zoning confirmation letter from us saying they have the proper zoning, or have got their admin permit, you don't give them a transitional living. You don't list them as your provider. Because their facility that they came to you with didn't meet our zoning.
Steve, Steve, if, if, if your office approves, says this person or this house meets our requirements, and you approve it, what is the public's appeal process?
Oh, a good question. So that's, that's part of, and we'll be getting to that here in, in a minute. We've got all the way to slide thirteen. So yes, we'll explain what the permit process is. But, but a lot of that is what comments we had directed from the public, including public notification. They want to know if this is a conditional use. They want some notification about that. There's also some concern about, well, six is too many. We'd like to have fewer people. But we also heard on the twenty-fifth, from a lot of people who are actually the providers themselves, and we actually had a couple of people testify, who previously were in the court system, and, and as you heard, are now in these facilities, trying to help others get their life back on track. And so we heard a lot of comments that, you know, providers want to be good neighbors. And Nebraska Mental Health Association, who's next to the assisted living, they work very closely with the assisted living facility. And, and some of them are, are really quite part of their neighborhoods. We won't get into a lot of this, because we don't want to take up all your time. But certainly, a lot of other communities ha- have ways they have addressed this. Rachel spent an awful lot of time looking at what other communities do as we first started looking through this. Spacing requirements is something that is quite typical. But we also need to be careful that our spacing requirement isn't so large that you basically make the use impossible, impossible, I guess would be the word, to, to, to be allowed. So what is coming forward to you, having heard from neighbors and residents, and the providers themselves, but also, say, from regulators? Because the one thing we heard from the state and some of the other regulators is, is they think it would be a little confusing if we started being a licensing agency of providers ourselves. You know, they, they would rather we each have our own roles, and we do our own roles well, than us trying to get into really something that is, that is their business. So as part of the compromise, that we would have a six-person limit in the AG and AGR, R1 through R4, and a twelve-person limit in R5 to R8. R5 to R8 being a more dense zoning district. We think having a little bit more number of persons would be appropriate. But again, remember today, with a special permit, somebody could ask for nine, or twelve, or fifteen. This would actually set a limit. We would have spacing requirements to avoid having a cluster of these. And it would be a, a conditional use. Once we've set all, you've met the conditions, off you go. And again, the state would be doing the inside, we would be handling the spacing. We're also adding a few additional districts where it is not allowed today, such as the AG, or a couple of commercial districts, also our B5 regional district.
So now, you just told us about, you know, the six-person limit and the twelve-person limit in the R districts, but what about like the, the O1 and O3?
Yeah, the commercial districts then wouldn't, would not have a, a specific limit on them.
Okay.
So the elements of our, our compromise proposal is that we will address density, spacing, it'll be a conditional use, and there'd be an administrative permit. And so I'll kind of go through theirs. And so here's a slide that explains, yes, there'd be no limit in the commercial districts. But also note that in the R5 to R8, while we allow twelve people, we would not allow twelve in one dwelling unit. If you have a duplex, you could have six on one side and six on the other. If you have a triplex, you could have four, four, and four. But any individual dwelling unit could not have more than six persons itself. So the spacing requirement. We're proposing that it be a thousand feet in our AG, AGR, R1 through R4, and five hundred in the commercial districts, and the, the R5 to R8. There wouldn't be any spacing requirement in the O3 or, or B5 districts, because they're, they're use permit districts. Now, one major difference, because you will note, this spacing is a lot less than the spacing for group homes. But group homes were only spaced to other group homes. This would have to be spaced to other transitional living facilities, but also a domestic shelter, or a homeless shelter, or fraternity or sorority, or a group home, or a residential healthcare facility. So there's far more things that you have to be spaced from, which we think then is also hoping, keeping the clustering away, that you wouldn't necessarily have a group home and a transitional living facility and a residential healthcare facility all in a row. The transitional living would have to have that spacing. And I ultimately would throw out that if this type of a, um, way of doing it is approved, we might consider doing the same for group homes. So that group homes and transitional, transitional living have a very similar spacing, but spacing to each, to each other as well. That would only be fair. So this is just an exhibit to give you an idea of what a five-hundred-foot spacing would look like in the R5 to R8. That's about three blocks by three blocks. So all of those red properties, if it comes up clear enough, you couldn't have another transitional living facility in those. And the, the way we are so exact is, if our GIS hits even two feet of your property, the whole property then shows up as not being able to have a transitional living facility. And then when you have the thousand-foot spacing, it'd be more like five blocks by five blocks, if you're, if you're looking at the older city block. So a fairly substantial area where you couldn't have any one of these other figures. And you will note, we'll provide it to you, but it's on our website. We have put together a map that shows in green all of the areas that would meet the spacing requirement. And that's a substantial portion of the city, because we wanted to, immediately, the question for providers are, well, what'd you leave us with? And it is actually a quite large part of the city.
Now, this would only be for three or more. So if they had three or less, they could still be in the circle.
That is correct. So within the circle, if I'm just three people, I'm a family. We don't have any ability to regulate a legitimate, uh, place meeting the family definition. So why a conditional use? Well, definitely, one of the things we had heard is that, well, if you develop conditions, but I have a special permit, I'll just, I have no certainty. I'll just end up with a bunch more conditions added to me. But then the next permit comes through, and it doesn't have any conditions added. And, and that doesn't seem fair. And we also think that because we're being very specific with our conditions, that if you can meet those conditions, it's only fair that you do go ahead and get approved like a group home. Because this would actually have even more conditions than a group home. So it was to try to provide some more consistency. And that's certainly one of the things we heard from providers, is it's very expensive to go through our process. And, and, you know, they don't want to have to do that when they don't really know what the, the result could be. Okay, so to the administrative permit, it would be approved by the planning director. You couldn't get your, your occupancy permit until you've had your, your administrative permit. We don't have a lot of administrative permits, but we do have them. So we have some cell towers, we have temporary concrete batch plants, temporary asphalt batch plants. We have a few of them that have very specific conditions. They have to get the permit through us. So we, we're already set up to, to do this kind of permit. We don't do a lot of them. We would notify people within two hundred feet after it is approved.
How did you pick the two hundred feet?
The two hundred feet is our standard notification requirement for any application. There is an administrative permit, there is not an appeal process set up. So again, to us, if you had an appeal process, then people would go off to planning commission and city council and have a whole bunch of additional conditions added. So it's the same way with a group home, though. There's no appeal process for a group home. And actually, from our open house, there's a group home opening up in Colonial Hills that had a lot of people upset, and they asked the same question. Well, we don't want this group home in our neighborhood. How do we appeal it? There is not an appeal period, or a method for a conditional use. The community sets the conditions, and you meet them, you, you get to proceed. However, there is a revocation process. And we were adding that to make sure it was clear. And as David mentioned, if you violate city, state, and, or local laws, that the planning director may revoke your special permit, or your conditional permit for that. If you stop following the conditions, you can have your administrative permit revoked as well. If we can prove you have seven people there, you remove all the parking spaces that were required. You, you know, you somehow, you yourself start violating the, the, the conditions. We were also gonna have a site plan and a floor plan, so that if for some reason somebody was using a brand, making a brand-new facility, which seems unlikely, it needs to fit in with the character of the neighborhood, that it looks and can function like a house. Or that you're not so altering an existing house, that, boy, when you're done, who could possibly use this house? You, you've made it pretty hard to be, return back to a, a more typical residential use.
One question that has been asked of me, or a concern, I guess, is, I know the first one we looked at, I can't remember how many residents, but there was only one bathroom. And so someone was saying, well, how can you have that many residents and only one bathroom? Is that something that's gonna be looked at when they look at like the site or the floor plans?
No, so as currently drafted, there isn't a requirement of, well, you have to have X number of bedrooms, or you have to have X number of bathrooms. Again, that to us is an internal operation question. If the state thinks there's some minimum necessary. There's also, is a minimum necessary floor space through the building code. So you do have to check off that if you're having six people living there, you have a big enough facility to meet the requirements of the building code, or, or the housing code.
Steve, I'd seen earlier in, in, in draft form, reference to new construction needing to meet design standards regardless of, of where it's located. Okay, keep going, Steve. Thank you.
That's okay. So yes, regardless, so we'll have to meet the neighborhood design standards if it's gonna be new construction in any part of the city. Now, these design standards were meant for porches and parking and things, and, and that could still work in a newer neighborhood. The design standards mostly are the nineteen fifty city limits. And so you have to be within there for the neighborhood design standards to take into account. Here, we'd say, we'll use them anywhere.
And could you give me planning department's reasoning as to why these facilities would need to meet design standards? Whereas any other residential construction is not needing to meet design standards outside of the nineteen fifty?
We just thought this was a good pre-made guide to help us reviewing a transitional living facility. Back on why do we only have neighborhood design standards in the existing city? That, that really goes back to when neighborhood design standards were started, is most of the concern was about fitting in with an older neighborhood, because a lot of newer neighborhoods had covenants that had their own standards. And so we, we could, though, there's, it's just simply something, the And so we could, though, it's just simply something the city's adopted. You could have our neighborhood design standards be city.
Oh, no, maybe I'm misunderstanding the intent. I apologize. I was under the impression that any facility that was going to be new construction specifically built for this purpose would need to meet the neighborhood design-
Yes.
...standards.
Correct.
Okay.
Even if they're outside of the 1950-
Even if they're outside of the 1950 boundary.
Correct.
It just helps us with, well-
I'm trying to understand-
Why use those standards?
The problem that we're trying to fix there.
Oh, the only problem would be that, for instance, I come in and I don't propose any windows on the front yard. I'm going to have a side entry, I'm going to have a door there, and I'm going to have zero windows to the street. Well, it's a new neighborhood you're going into, the neighborhood design standards don't apply. The neighborhood design standards, though, do actually require two openings, a door or a window on each level of the story of the house. So at least it gave us something to say, well, we think that's a little more friendly in fitting in with the neighborhood, to have some windows and doors facing the street, or the pitch of the roof kind of fits in with other pitches of roofs. It doesn't dictate style, you know, it doesn't say it has to be Victorian, doesn't say brick, all those kind of things, but it has some real basic minimums for you to kind of ensure it fits in a little bit better with the area.
Okay.
That was our thought. So the parking requirement would be the same parking requirement as group homes, so we would add transitional living there. And again, it was noted that a lot of people don't have driver's licenses who are even coming to the facilities, or certainly don't have a car. Signs would be prohibited as a part of this. Okay, so kind of trying to wrap this all up, so as we were looking again, what were the various interests and concerns of groups? For neighbors, there's certainly a lot of concern about who's watching inside, and while our proposal doesn't address that, we think that should still be the role of these various state or county or federal agencies. But we are doing, though, is we're adding the notification, we're trying to address the impact on the neighborhood by not having a clustering of these, and having a limit of six in some neighborhoods, or 12 in our more dense areas. And so we think that addresses a lot, but not necessarily every concern of the neighbors. We are also trying to address for the providers themselves, that they have specific conditions, they know what they have to do, if they meet them, they're going to get their administrative permit. They're also, I have to say, concerned that if they were only limited to four, the building code, which we're not talking about, actually for this kind of a use, has a requirement that typically has to be met with a fire sprinkler system, which can be, you know, into $15,000 to $20,000. And so they can't afford, when they can do three and not have to do any of this, and our limit is then four, but I have to add a $15,000 sprinkler system, well, why would they do it? So we're also trying to say, we think this is an important service to provide in our community, so we have to provide that it still has some financial feasibility. Certainly, maybe they would like it better if in the R1 to R4 it could be 12, but we think six is a nice kind of compromise there as well. So for regulators, folks like ourself and the state, again, we think it works for us because we each have an appropriate role that we're set up for. It's helpful to us because the conditions are approved, we can tell people in advance, here's the conditions that you'll need to make. And then ultimately, for the people who are going to live there, who we heard from as well, you know, they wanted a safe and sober place, they wanted help in getting a transition, they'd really like to feel more welcomed and accepted in the neighborhood, and perhaps by them being a conditional use and they can go in, and there's not a huge, you know, three months of hearings and a lot of upset, that helps them perhaps to have a little more acceptance within the neighborhood. So we think this helps provide for our ultimate goal in providing for the various needs of our community. We tried to balance those needs. We have all of this information on our website. Rachel is already getting a lot of comments and questions and people calling. We're available to go out to neighborhood groups, like the Near South, who had already invited us. So the next steps, the city council briefing, which will be like this briefing, will be September 21st. It's open to the public, but there'll be no public testimony, just like this one. Your hearing is the 30th. The city council hearing needs to be October 26th, because the moratorium ends on November 16th. So on September 30th, we ask you to roll up your sleeves, be locked in here until you're done, because in order for us to complete with the moratorium, your role needs to finish on that day. And just to let you know, for that hearing, we have nine things on consent and one public hearing, which is this.
I thought you were going to say you're going to have a buffet.
Oh, no, sorry. Not a buffet, nine things on consent.
Buffets are bad right now. No buffet.
Yes.
Not allowed.
So if you have food on your mind. We are asking, though, that the public hearing on this will be 1:30, because we, for our COVID concerns, we didn't want to have a whole bunch of people here for our nine consent items, taking up all of the seats, and meanwhile, everyone's trying to come in as well. So something might also come off consent, and you have to have a hearing, but you might do your nine consents and vote on them, and then you'll have 20 minutes until the actual hearing starts. So bring a sandwich.
Bring some homework to grade.
Bring some homework to grade, whatever the case would be. And so with that, if there's any additional questions, we could certainly try to answer those as well.
I just want to thank you and Rachel and the department for responding so well. I mean, it's obviously been well thought out. And thank you.
And I, we haven't given enough credit to our city attorney's office. They have helped us quite a bit with this as well, Abby Luttrell, to make us, keep us, to make sure that this falls within the legal framework as well.
Well, everyone's pointing at Tim, but you said Abby, who really did the work.
Tim always helps us out, but we keep him awfully busy on other matters as well.
Steve, if the planning director rescinds a conventional, is that word, report?
Administrative permit?
Yeah, administrative permit. Is there a list of what he's watching or what he's basing that on?
Yes, I think the director would have to have some kind of findings that is put together in a letter that says, here are the circumstances.
Right.
And I think we would first try to work with the person to say, okay, hold it, we're getting these complaints, we're getting these calls, so I don't think it would be, there's a parking violation out front, we're going to revoke your administrative permit. People get out of compliance with use permits and special permits, and we, our first goal is to try to work with them to get back into compliance versus revoking their special permit.
And am I correct in understanding, Steve, that the planning director, their ability to revoke would be limited in scope to the conditional permitting process? So, for example, neighborhood complaints of loud parties would not be a condition of the permit, thus, the planning director would not be able to revoke upon that?
It'd have to be an actual violation of city, state, or federal law. So if they were actually convicted, the facility and its use are violating the same city, state law.
Okay.
That could be, but certainly just complaints about it is not one of the two things that were listed for revoking an administrative permit. Violating the actual conditions, which would, I would assume that might be the most common complaint. I think there's eight people living there. And we'll have to admit, that will be a challenging thing, because we might find out there's six people living there and two guests who come around an awful lot. But are they living there? No, they can prove to us they live somewhere else. Yes, they stay here quietly, you know, they are visiting quite a lot. But again, each of the rules, also the provider as to how they handle guests and everything else.
I wouldn't be able to think that they'd be able to have loud parties because it's supposed to be safe and sober. I mean, unless it's-
Just throwing something out.
You know?
Yeah, I mean, if there's a complaint about trash or something else-
Yeah, I was going to say, what about something like dilapidate, you know, like-
It would not be complaints, it would be violations, actual proven violations.
And then the only other question that I had, Steve, is this the first proposed new construction use that would require meeting design standards out of the 1950 city limit?
We have used some of the standards of neighborhood design standards in some of our townhome developments, when we've talked about having window openings and things. So we've used elements of it, but this would be the first time that just to reference them as a whole would have been used.
Okay.
Again, we're just trying to say, how in a new neighborhood, how would you judge this? And rather than trying to come up with a whole new rulebook for it-
Right.
...we thought the neighborhood design standards have provided some, not really particularly onerous, most people in older neighborhoods are able to meet the neighborhood design standard. Most of them who have to redesign is because they didn't look at them to begin with. But if they look at them to begin with, most people can figure out, oh, in this neighborhood, I have to do a garage, or I do or I don't have to do a porch, and, you know, and they can figure it out.
I would think that the neighbors would appreciate that, just because they don't want something going in there that's going to look institutional or, you know, out of place with the neighborhood. And it would kind of go with the, you know, if they have to submit a plan of how they're going to decommission.
Well, I would think that if a house was built in Wilderness Hills that was acceptable to the city, that that would, should be acceptable for transitional housing.
Yeah, yeah.
And those houses-
Our concern is, for instance, since it's the 1950 city limits, there's an awful lot of neighborhoods in green that are 1950 to 1970, and their homeowners associations are now no longer in place. And to have new construction, you have to assume the lot was vacant for some reason. And so there, in all circumstances, there may not be an HOA, and so we would be the only design review.
And I guess personally, I don't, I don't see the point or purpose of it, really, because I think that, you know, either the standard, I mean, sure, you have it for this particular use, you know, are we going to start just adding more uses? I mean, sure, why not? I mean, what's the point of this use, having it? That's my line of thinking. Sure.
Yeah, I get, no, no, no. I think we may have a discussion about this on the 30th, but I would be troubled by that inclusion as well, except that with the topic that we're talking about and the fact that we're changing it from a special permit process where we could actually add conditions to a conditional use situation, I'm more comfortable with it. But, you know, I want to hear testimony and-
But, for example, it's not a conditional use of a group home.
Correct, actually, many of these conditions are not conditions of group homes.
Right.
And as we mentioned, we might want to look at the spacing requirement for group homes differently. We'd have to see if people think this is a good approach, if they think some more of these conditions are appropriate for group homes or not.
Yeah.
I have to say, I do think probably 99% of these will go into existing facilities.
Sure.
Both group homes and these.
No doubt.
It'd be very rare to see somebody bring a construction.
I agree with that, yeah.
Agreed.
Anyway, I'm looking forward to the testimony and seeing how that all comes out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so if there's anything else, again, it'll be, your meeting will start normally at 1, but this public hearing would start at 1:30. We'll also note, by the way, we're going to try to encourage people that, we think both people who might, neighbors or providers, so far what we've heard, almost everyone is in support of having conditions. All of them have their own ideas on the, so you might, when you call support, get 50 people talking in support who all have different levels of support, and almost nobody in opposition, because we haven't so far seen somebody say, I'd forget the whole thing, I'd just rather leave it the way it is, type of thing.
Yep.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Steve.
Thank you very much for your patience.
Rachel, too. Good information.
Yes, thank you, Rachel.
Oh, we do need to vote to adjourn the planning commission meeting.
Yeah, but one other thing before we do that. So you're going to do the same presentation to the city council?
Yes.
I kind of jumped, I kind of maybe jumped the gun with my question at the beginning of this on slide three. You might want to just tell the city council that you want to go through this whole thing.
Oh, yes, I made a note to myself, move slide to later in-
Yeah, exactly.
Or you might just say, can you hold?
Because I didn't know it was coming.
Actually, this presentation we did to the neighborhood groups, and so early on, I was trying to explain, here's this all of the process. And it worked when I was explaining it to neighborhood groups and the state wasn't here, but I think for the city council, yeah, well-
You're going to ask as many questions as we do?
Yes, absolutely.
Yep.
Make sure we move to adjourn.
Yeah, we're back, yes.
Second, Finnegan.
Jerry.
Campbell.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Shear.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Cor.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.